My name is Tosin Okodua, and I've lived in Cannon Ridge subdivision for four and a half years. But prior to that, I know this area very well. I grew up in this area. So watching what has happened in our subdivision, and I know the heated debate about opening it up and having cars come through is an easy access. This is not about convenience. We've addressed their issue, which is having access for public safety to be able to get into the subdivision if there was an issue. We've provided them that, which is we are going to create a gate so they can have access to have those things. But for the first time since I brought my daughter home in my subdivision as she was small, she's four now, going on five, and I love nothing more than riding my bike or watching her ride her bike. I feel comfortable that I can do that with her. But with all those cars coming through that subdivision, I can't. So please, I understand the inconvenience to them. It's also inconvenient to us. It's easy for me to go to the summit to get my daughter to school, but I too have to go the extra mile to get my daughter to Stonewall Tale. So this is not about convenience. It's about safety. Thank you guys for your time.
Hello, my name is Shanita Savage, and I'm at 300 Goshawk in Cannon Ridge. Pretty much everyone has said same thing. It's the same thing. I too have children. I have a 14-year-old and I have an eight-year-old, son will be nine, and I'm fearful for their lives because of the traffic was out of control. But I'm not gonna keep you guys, I'm not gonna use my whole two minutes, but it just boils down to one thing: safety or convenience? Safety, convenience? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tracy Sirdiven, and I live at 2629 Jack and Ar Lane. I am actually the closest to the closure. I moved to Georgia in 2020 from Brooklyn, right at the height of the pandemic. South Fulton has been a refuge for my family. And what's interesting is that the first place that I landed was at the summit. We rented in that community for an entire year, and it was through living there that I found the Cannon Ridge community and said, "This is, this whole area is beautiful." And I would love to be able to raise my family here. I have a young son who's six years old. I will say and be the first to acknowledge that I was once an offender. I was once one of those 2,000 cars rolling through Jack and Ar Lane, if we're gonna be honest about what happens. I heard one of the residents talk about, "Well, if, you know, if they're experiencing traffic, we are too." And the fact of the matter is, they weren't. In fact, I felt more safe and comfortable to allow my son to play outside when I lived in Summit Hills, Summit, Stonewall Tale, because they have safety and security in their community. And I believe that this is not just a convenience question, it's not just a safety and security question, but it's an equity question for the residents of Cannon Ridge. We should be able to enjoy the safety and security that Summit enjoys as well. And so I would implore you to look at that lane and to see that in fact the speed, right, that someone can accelerate during that, on that road, provides the excessive speed that is listed here, that to our earlier point, the speed bumps or any, no other calming measures would provide. So I encourage you all to continue to keep the road closed.
Good evening. Safety trumps convenience. Safety trumps convenience. Safety trumps convenience. I say that so emphatically. By the way, my name is Al Harris. I live at 2761 Jack and Ar Lane. It has impacted my family because twice my wife has almost been run off the road while she's trying to walk through the neighborhood from flying cars. Not saying they're coming from the summit. We've all acknowledged that many neighborhoods fly through the neighborhood. At one time, she was driving the speed limit within the neighborhood. A car behind her thought she was driving too slow, honked the horn, honked the horn, flew by her. Another time, she was trying to get to her driveway, and as she was turning, a car that guessed thought she was going too slow went between her and the house and nipped her. So because of all these things, I will say, when I first moved there, I knew about the back entryway. I didn't think it was an issue. But as I've lived there longer, it has become an apparent issue. I've even almost been run off the road. So I say safety trumps convenience because it's an inconvenience to me. I have two kids that go to Stonewall Tale. It's much quicker to get through there going through the summit. But I would rather drive two hours to be able to see my two kids live another day than just to be convenient and get 10 minutes to go get them or pick them up. So I'm gonna close and say, safety trumps convenience. Please do the right thing. This is not, and the safety issues they've raised, she's already addressed. Emergency vehicles, we would get through in and out. That's not an issue. So what other issue is there besides convenience? Safety trumps convenience.
Hi, everyone. My name is Antoinette Edwards, and I too live on Jack and Ar Lane. I appreciate you guys listening to all the residents of the city about this issue because if this was not a democracy where we could all speak, we automatically would lose. It's a small community. There are only 47 homes, and we have had this issue impacting all of us. Most of the homes in the community reside on Jack and Ar or Bunton Lane. So as a result, we see all the traffic coming through because most homes are in the path of the traffic. I have a 13-year-old son, and when kids are getting into their teenage years, you want to give them independence and freedom. Prior to the road having limited access, I could not allow my son to go outside, play with the neighbors, ride his bike, common things that grown children should be doing. I could not allow, would not allow my son to walk by himself because it was so unsafe. And I'm not saying it's any different for you. I understand the issue in the city, but I also ask that you understand us, understand me. As a parent, I've watched my son at the bottom of the driveway waiting to board the school bus, having to jump out of the way of a car, turning to, of... My son had to jump back to get rid of the car from hitting him. This was a constant issue when the road was open. The road is cold, and I know why my son would kill my neighbors. He could go out and go visit his friends in the neighborhood, and I feel safe with that. So I'm asking you to close, not because it impacted so many people, it impacted all of us, but I'm asking to maintain the quality of life and maintain the safety for all our children, including mine and yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can y'all hear me on this? Okay. Thank you all for being here and listening and understanding, hopefully, what we're trying to say, the message that we're all trying to convey. I moved into Cannon Ridge in March of 2019, and I'm very excited to live there now, but before, I was even more excited that I could get out and put my gym shoes on and get my run on and lose some weight, much needed. But one day, I got up and I put on those gym shoes, and I went out there, and I'm jogging and looking at the beautiful scenery in the subdivision, and I too had to jump out of the way because I was almost ran over. And then I had to question myself, "Am I supposed to walk against traffic or to traffic?" But then I thought to myself, "It's not worth it either way." So I had to invest in something else, a treadmill. I mean, it was a seriously busy street when I first moved in there, and I have two kids of my own. They are now 13 and 10, but back then, they were more like seven and 10, little kids, just learning how to ride a bicycle. And I just did not feel safe for them to be out there to ride. "Mommy, can we go?" "No, you cannot go up the street. No, you can only ride in your driveway." I even allowed them to ride in the yard, grass, roll over, I don't care, roll over the grass, do circles, do donuts, whatever you need to do to keep them safe. Please uphold this decision to keep the road closed. It's not about convenience. It is about safety. And trust me, I really, since I've been there, even when the road was open, I never used the back road to exit. But even thus and so, please, listen to us because we really and truly want to keep our children safe. That's who I most and primarily concern for. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, can you state your name for the record?
Sure. Oh, Dr. Sandra Hall Lay, 2749 Jakonar Lane.
Thank you, Dr. Lay, and thank you for your work with Futureseekers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Verna Bailey, and I live on Bunton Lane. I think I'm the only one here now who is on Bunton Lane. So I'm right at the entrance to the development, and I wouldn't go over what previous speakers have said, but I'm living there 12 years. And since I've been there, the entrance to the development, that facade there has been knocked down eight times. The speed that they come through the development at, they cannot negotiate the roundabout. And so they just drive right into the columns eight times. So I won't go over all what has been said before concerning the speed and so on, but everything that goes past Jakonar passes my house. It's unbearable. Please keep it closed.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilpersons. I'm Deloitte Wilson. I live at 310 Goshawk Ridge. I too have been almost hit from just casually walking on the road. A car came so close to me that I felt the wind as it passed by me. And again, like my neighbor said, now you question whether you walk against the traffic or with the traffic. So that is in itself a safety concern. But moreover, I would like to leave you councilpersons with this question. If you have heard all of these arguments before, you have heard your elected official approve this measure once and maybe twice, and now we are here for maybe a second or a third time saying the same authentic thing, then to me, if you choose to open this back up, you have undermined your own work. And then you have also undermined the integrity of the attorneys that worked for you as the city that approved this and approved the permit for the bill to get to where he is right now with a partial closure. So think about what you are sending the message, that you either didn't know what you were doing then, or you don't know what you were doing now. Don't mean to insult you, but think about that.
My name is Reese Reynolds, and I stay at 2664 Jack and Ar Lane. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and safety members. I would just like to say that I actually stay on Jack and Ar Lane where the hill is, and you can't even get your, well, you never used to go get your mail without almost being ran over. Also, there's a curve right before the entrance, so you would have people speeding around the curve, and sometimes they would end up on the opposite side of the road, almost causing accidents. I have nephews, and it's just really hard just to even let them walk across the street. Also, there's a roundabout at the entrance, and you would have multiple cars going the opposite way, which in return would cause people to try to avoid them, which would lead them into running into the main entrance sign. So I would just like to say, safety trumps convenience. Also, opening up Jack and Ar Lane will not deal with the issue as far as traffic. There needs to be either widening of the lanes because we do have multiple developments popping up. Also, they're building more apartments, and it's really not gonna change as far as, oh, yeah. So, thank you.
Mr. Adams, do we have anyone on the Zoom?
No, sir.
All right. We've been at this for an hour. We usually have rebuttals, but I'm going to ask if we could just have questions from council, and you all work your, whatever you have to say into the, because I'm sure council has some questions about all that we've heard tonight. Is that, can we agree to that? All right, I'm going to start with Dr. Rowl. I saw her hand first. Is the queue back up? Are we using the queue, not using the queue?
The queue's open.
Okay. I saw Dr. Rowl and Councilwoman Williams. Everybody else, if you hop in the queue, that'd be great. Dr. Rowl?
Just so I wanna, I hope the Public Works person can help us on this. If I recall, weren't there two traffic studies done on this area? Because I think, if I recall, the numbers, we just had to verify them because they were high. Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Have, well, I guess you, the numbers, you don't have any new numbers because it's been closed for two, okay? That was my only question, okay? And just to clarify, so the issues with the school system, they've rerouted, from what I heard from the commentary, these routes have been rerouted for Fulton County School?
Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding as well.
And then I just have one question for Fire. Chad Jones, the solution about the gate, does that address the issue? And can you speak to, was there an issue with the delay in response? And you may not know, because I understand that's ambulance. I guess that's what they're referring to. Is that accurate?
I can't speak to the Grady response, but I was asked to pull the numbers for the last two months.
Okay.
For the subdivisions, talked to the crews. We have two stations in the area, Station Four on Plummer Road and Station Three there on Stonewall Tale. So Station Three is the primary response. They didn't indicate any delay in any calls to either subdivision that we had on record, and over a two-month period, we had 18 calls in that area. But again, from our dispatch, fours would respond to their location and threes would respond to another. So I can't speak to the EMS, but we were approached, Fire Marshal Dingler was approached about a safety issue and what to do with the gate. We do have the Knox box, which again, would be a solution that we presented instead of any type of speed bump, speed hump, because of our apparatus. So we did, you know, give them the Knox box option.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. This, I guess this is a question for Public Works since I was not here when all of this, when this decision was made and all these presentations happened. So I want to be, I want to be sure that I understand what I'm hearing. We have a subdivision with 47 homes with a road that is fully within that subdivision, butting up against a subdivision with 500 homes and another subdivision with about 200-ish homes? And none of the road in question is in those subdivisions? Am I, am I, am I hearing those logistics correctly?
I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call for order.
I'm asking, I'm asking this question for two very specific reasons, because I want to make sure I understand where this road is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for just, just some order. We are, we are asking our city staff, where is Jack and Ar Lane? In which subdivision is Jack and Ar Lane?
Well, to my understanding here, that Jack and Ar Lane runs along this area there, but at the same time, no, sorry, here. At the same time, this was developed before the city was established. You have these roads already coming in, and they were coming in designed with double cul-de-sac within this subdivision, but they're still public roads.
Did that answer your question, Councilwoman Williams?
It did, and it, yes and no. I'm very clear that they're public roads.
Yes, ma'am.
That's not my question.
Would you want the delineation of where the actual subdivision was developed?
Correct. I'm trying to understand layout and subdivisions relative to subdivisions because, one, I live in a subdivision in the back of my subdivision, and the house behind me is in a different subdivision. So I'm trying to understand if this is a similar setup where my street is at a corner of Sapphire and Turtle Bend Lane, and if you turn by my house, it takes you into the other subdivision. Is that the layout that we're talking about? Or something similar to that?
And I'll, I can go into the, a little more research on the details of the layout again. That was done some years ago. I'll be more happy to provide that information once I do that research.
And am I hearing correctly that the traffic, I want to be sure that this number is accurate because it seems, it seems to be a lot to have 2,300 cars a day coming through a subdivision that has 47 houses in it. Is that number accurate?
I can't speak to that particular number. I don't have that study in front of me, but I can get that information, and we'll provide that to council.
Councilwoman Williams, I'm just gonna say, I have visited Jack and Ar Lane, and I was your neighbor in the older subdivision, and it is exactly like Turtle Bend Lane. It is, it is the same situation.
Okay. And that's really why I asked the question, which leads to the second thing, is that what I believe I'm hearing is very similar to the same issues that residents have brought to me in Old National East about the amount of traffic that goes speeding up and down Schofield and the surrounding streets because of people using their neighborhood as a cut through. And so if that is a very, if that's a similar situation, I want to be clear in my own head that that is what is happening if I'm gonna be asked to make a decision about to open or not to open this road or portion of a road.
You got it.
Thank you. I'm gonna wait for this queue to come up again. Do you mind bringing that queue up so I can see who was next? I think it was Councilwoman Gomes.
Okay. Can you all hear me? I think so. Of course, you all know this started in, what, 2019, early 2019, with the first homeowners' meeting where everyone got together to pretty much tell me that the traffic, the traffic, the traffic was an issue. And we had multiple meetings, and then also to hearing the concerns of actually doing a traffic study. That is the first step that we normally do once the summit, I mean, it's not summit, Cannon Ridge actually decided to move forward with their petition to have the traffic study. And Public Works did their due diligence. Unfortunately, this has turned two subdivisions against each other. Trying to bring safety to an issue, of course, you know, Cannon Ridge, they're 47, Summit is 578 and 210. They are specifically outnumbered. And it's not an issue of, you know, taking one side. I've heard all of the stories. You all have said everything under the, everything under the sun about what I am or Nextdoor, and I just, that ain't me. But however, you all perceive it the way that you want. I don't have friends in Cannon Ridge. I'm just doing what is right. And if you ask any other resident, they will say, "Councilwoman Gomes, it's for the integrity of our communities and for safety." I can tell you that same particular day when we voted, when was that, in 2020? I had been out to Cannon Ridge, actually going to the Summit of Stonewall Tale. A car flew by me. Now, I normally don't go to speed limit, but a car flew by me just to get to the other side. I have seen the videos of kids almost getting ran over trying to get on a school bus. And I'm not saying that this is not an issue that's not happening across all of the city because it is. But they came up with a solution. It wasn't the fact that everyone was against it. The post office talked about, "Oh, well, it's an inconvenience." The school talked about, "It's an inconvenience." No one talked about safety, though. And that's the thing that concerns me the most. I hear you, Summit of Stonewall Tale. I do. It is, I've had people call me from Waterford Commons, "Open up the road, Councilwoman Gomes." I've had people call me from Regency Oaks everywhere to open up the road. How is it okay for people to cut through other people's subdivisions? I just don't understand that. And I wouldn't do it for you all. You all, when we looked at it, when they said 2,600 cars, we asked them to do it again. Do that study again, because that doesn't even sound right. And it came back again with a high number of cars cutting through a subdivision. And I'm not saying it is all Summit of Stonewall Tale, as I've said. There's been accidents, there've been residents in Waterford Commons, other subdivisions. So it is a thing of people cutting through, but there has to be, we became a city to make these type of decisions, to preserve the safety of our communities. And every decision that I make will not be popular. As you can see, y'all eat me alive on Facebook and Nextdoor. But I feel in good spirit and with my integrity that I made the right decision in asking for this road to be closed with a safety box, a knock box. The road is not closed. Emergencies can still, the people can get through. And I did ask the chief because I saw the post on Nextdoor about, you know, the daughter not being able to get proper emergency care. And I, that's very unfortunate that that happened to you, but I did. I wanted to know, "Chief, had you had to reroute any calls for any emergencies to the Summit of Stonewall Tale?" The answer was no. I don't want this to be an emotional play, but it is safety concerns. There were 18 calls that were sent to the Summit of Stonewall Tale. Four of them were false alarms within the past two months. Eight of them were fire, and seven of them were EMS. So our community, as far as focusing on safety, I know that our fire department and our police officers have done an amazing job trying to communicate the road closure or whatever else, how to navigate in getting to you all for safety concerns. I just want you to know that this won't be probably the last road closure or, because we're going through the traffic calming, there are a lot of, there's a lot of petitions. We're learning a lot of lessons from this, actually. But also, at the same time, I believe that we made the right decision, and that's my position on it.
Okay. Thank you for recognizing me. I've heard from both sides, and actually took time out of my precious Saturday and drove over and rode through the community. And Ms. Sally Jones, I do want to address this because I had to visit another subdivision that's going through a similar concern where cars are passing through their neighborhood from another... where cars are passing through their neighborhood from another subdivision. And I hope by bringing Public Works in-house that we can get these projects moving. When I rode over to Summit and Cannon subdivisions, they, the Summit is absolutely, is absolutely right. That traffic light in Stonewall Tale and Hamilton, it needs to be expedited. I mean, people are getting dying on City of South Fulton roads. They're dying on City of South Fulton and GDOT roads, too. But in the City of South Fulton, where we're responsible for erecting traffic lights and four-way stops and roundabouts, we are moving extremely too slow. It's ridiculous. I found tickets recently, and I'm, I'm gonna send you an email, comprehensive email of tickets open since 2020 and 2021. And it's ridiculous. And so I stand with residents on getting these traffic light signals where they're supposed to be. And Stonewall Tale and Hamilton definitely needs one. There was also an unpaid road in that area that would help with the pass-through that needs to be paved. And I think you put that on a T-Splosh. I can't think of the name of the road. I should have wrote it down. But it was absolutely, and one of the roads needed to be resurfaced. It was absolutely ridiculous. And so I just need to hold your feet to the fire to make sure that you get on this Public Works division that we have recently brought in-house to get this stuff done. There are actually three ways. There are two exits on Stonewall Tale, and there's one through Brittany Park. And so there are three ingresses and egress. And I actually took my husband with me because I needed him to help me understand the importance of safety versus convenience and how things are viewed from a public safety point of view. And I have a few questions. When was the subdivision created? Okay. And we adopted these policies in 2019. When was Cannon created? No, when was the subdivision? And we didn't adopt, we didn't adopt these policies until 2019. And we didn't adopt the fire code policy, the new policy, until after these subdivisions were brought in as well. And so, you know, I hate that two communities are at odds, but what I'm hearing from the larger subdivision is the most concern that they have is being able to get into and out of the subdivision in the case of emergencies. And so if Cannon is going to pay for a fence, a knock fence to alleviate that, then that, that concern shouldn't be. Because if they're going to allow public safety, and that was what my husband said, is that most of the time, they look at, they, they don't want one interest, they don't want the main interest blocked and not being able to get into the other interest in case of emergencies. So if they're gonna put a fence and allow the passage to come through their neighborhood in the case of emergency, then that, that solves that problem. And that's what I'm hearing from most of the people that is in a larger subdivision. Their main concern is, if there's an emergency, they want to be able to have public safety to come through and service. And they're paying for that fence. So when is that, I just want to ask, do you have an estimation of when that fence will be erected and constructed, attorney sellers?
So, right now, there's a stop work order issued by the city because the construction had begun. So, once this process finishes, I think maybe 60 days, 60 to 90 days, because the construction has started, it's, I think, well, let me not say that because I think there's some permitting issues because the old permits expire. So I don't know about all of them.
Well, I saw the roundabouts being constructed.
Yes.
Not the roundabouts, but the cul-de-sacs. It was a double cul-de-sac. I saw those being constructed.
Correct. They're being constructed, but since this has been proceeding, we're like a year, maybe two now. So the permits that were issued at that time have, they're, oh, they expired. So we have, you know, they have to be re-permitted. So I don't, I don't want to give you a time and then the permitting process goes, you know, awry.
Okay, thank you. So essence, when this stop order is, is lifted, the process can move forward with the subdivision getting a gate? Is Attorney Hyman, am I understanding that correct?
What happened, Councilwoman Willis, is that the construction crew that Cannon had contracted with was prepared to proceed with the installation, but then there was injunction. And so basically, that's when the stop work order was issued to honor the injunction. And so the status quo being maintained, that they just stopped what they were doing. And right now, from my understanding, Judge, we do a status report to Judge Whitaker. So she's just been holding this matter in abey, in abeyance. And so after whatever council decision, then there'll be a report to Judge Whitaker. And I'm pretty sure at some point in time, she'll make her decision.
Okay. So for, for me, this is not about the have and have nots. This is not about convenience. This is about safety. And if we could just get past this process, allow Cannon to go ahead and move forward with constructing, constructing the gate to allow passage for emergency purposes, then that will solve most of the problems from this subdivision, the Stonewall Tale at Summit. And so, thank you so much, both communities, for enduring this three-hour waiting process. I know it was uncomfortable, but I appreciate hearing from both sides. I appreciate speaking to both attorneys. Attorney Hook, you know, I have so much respect for you. Thank you so much. But the main thing for me is safety. And if they're gonna, at their expense, construct a gate to allow for emergency vehicles to pass through, then that would, that would suffice most of your concerns. Because you already have three ways to get in and out. Thank you so much. We can't allow you to speak out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you to both communities for coming forward and stating your case. When I look at the, the maps that are provided for this area, it just, again, this is one of those cases that reminds me why we needed to create this city and do right by our planning and zoning and land use. Because, to be quite honest, I could not see us approving this right now. I can almost guess, if all this was presented to this council right now that way, we probably would not approve it, right? Like my colleague said, safety is a big thing. I, I've said multiple times, the hardest thing that I've had to do since I've been elected was to sit through the family whose, the father got killed on one of our roads. And it just happened to be a GDOT road. And I've even said to, to the officials at GDOT, "I don't ever want to have to experience that again." So I don't know what I would do if we make a decision to open back up that road and all those safety concerns that I've heard. Some child, some parent got killed in that subdivision. I just would not be able to deal with it. So I think the safety issue of putting the gates there for emergency access, it's not, it may, may not be ideal for everyone, but I think it solves some of the problems in a very difficult, very, very difficult situation right now. But that's what we gotta deal with. So as we move forward and as we address these, I, I live in a community where part of another community that's attached to mine is closed. And both of our community want it closed, right? Because we used to have cars being stolen, people exit easily out, and all kind of things used to happen, right? And so these issues happen all over the city because, again, when a lot of this stuff was being built, you did not have a government here who was looking out for your best interests, unfortunately. And as, I'll say that again, the people who used to make a lot of decisions for here didn't have to live here and to live with those decisions. That's why we have to, we had to change that. And while I have the mic, I too want to recognize Representative Basemo. She, you know, I call her Madam President because I served with her during the City of Movement. So, thank you again.
Mr. Reeves, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you. And I do want to say, I heard both sides of the argument. But there was a solution that has been put in place since 2020. And I just don't understand why that, what this council voted on was not followed through because it was a legit solution for safety for both residents. Because I heard the man who's 78, who has a concern about the first responders coming if, if an event happened to him. And so that, this was addressed. But it's a bigger question to me that goes on about our subdivision regulations and how developers come in and, you know, plan these things out because this should never happen. And because if I see the little land there, you can build a cutout outside of that subdivision that will provide the access to it. And so, but we have a new sheriff in town, which is the CDRA, and we're gonna have us a little presentation here. And we're gonna address some of these issues for the future because we do have control now in our hands. And so we will be, you know, making the adequate changes necessary so we don't revisit this type of situation in the future. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you. And, oh, yes, Sister Gomes, you did make the right decision.
All right. Councilman Sebastian, Councilman Reeves, y'all took the words right out of my mouth. I'm gonna come back to that. But I did have a couple of questions before we close the hearing because we haven't done that. It's, I, I guess I'll ask our, our Public Works official or anyone else who knows. I just want to confirm, there are three, there are three exits currently for the Summit at Stonewall Tale. There are three ways to get out of that subdivision?
To my, yes, there are, there are ways to exit and enter the subdivision.
And do any of those exits have a light, a traffic light?
Traffic light, those, no, sir.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Just formally do that before I, before I, before I launch into these comments. I, as, as Councilwoman Williams said, I, we used to live in adjoining subdivisions. And when the subdivision, when Woodward Estates was built, I used to drive through there all the time because there was no light on Old National to make a left into that LA Fitness Shopping Center. So it was safer for me to drive through the subdivision. I also understand the, the concerns about, about safety. It, it concerns me that, in all this time, as Councilwoman Willis said, that, that we haven't gotten this light situation together. I remember being a child, my parents and the residents of Forest Oaks, Haley Hills, North subdivision, petitioning then Commissioner Michael Hightower to get us this light at Creole Road. Unfortunately, a couple of people had to die before we got that light, which is, which is unfortunate. That seems to be a a problem here in South Fulton County. The, I, I am so happy, it, it's hard being mayor, but, but I'm so happy to be mayor right now because I will not have to vote on this item. I am praying that there is not a tie that I have to break because this is, this is a very difficult decision. There, people moved out here, and we heard a lot of people talk about that. People moved out here to have, you know, a better life, to be able to spread out and have space to ride bikes with their kids and, and, and all the things that we heard. And a lot of people want our way of life. And so more and more and more of them are coming. And we've got to prepare for the, prepare for them or we gotta start saying no. We gotta figure that out. So you're absolutely right, Councilman Sebastian and Councilman Reeves. We do have a presentation coming up from CDRA Director Derek Hall. And it's actually going to be the first. Every month, I'm so glad that so many people came out. Every month in our work session, we're going to be tackling a different part of comprehensive, comprehensive land use and planning and zoning. And so I hope that all of you that, that came out tonight, for whatever reason, that you all keep, that you all keep coming back. When we do tackle this, though, we, we do, it's imperative that we get, get it right the first time. You know, this, this subdivision existed, these two subdivisions existed and they were open, and then we closed it, and now we're thinking about opening it back up. Like, we, we just gotta be more thoughtful and deliberate when we make zoning decisions. And I understand that this was not our decision to make. But, but I have seen this issue replicate itself since we have been incorporated as a city. When we build subdivisions, it is important for us to not, or when we allow subdivisions to be built, is important not to just consider the subdivision that is on the agenda, but all of the subdivisions that are around. We've gotta consider the traffic. We've gotta consider the hydrology studies and the runoff. There, there have been multiple subdivisions that have, that have come to a mayor Mondays and said, "Since this new subdivision has been built, my backyard is getting flooded." Or my, you know, the, the water from the creek is, is coming up to my house and, and I'm losing acreage, and, and my deck is about to fall in. So, so we've just gotta be thoughtful about that. I, I want to thank everybody who came out and who did sit through our, our first three hours. I, I, what I hope that you take away from that is that we gotta keep talking to each other. You know, we had a very contentious first half, and we are back here talking to one another. But what we don't do enough of, Councilman Sebastian, is, is talk to each other in between meetings. So I was grateful to have lunch with you last week and, or this week, actually. And I, I want to encourage you all, no matter how this vote comes out, to keep talking to one another and to not, not wait until you get into a meeting like this to talk, but just be neighborly and, and, and talk with one another. And we're, we're going to, we're gonna get a traffic light. We're gonna do maybe some other things. We're gonna work, we're gonna work this out on behalf of all the citizens. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I make, I make a motion to deny the road reopening for Jack and R Lane.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's roll call vote, Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously. All right. Thank you. We're gonna go, go back up to these two zoning items, 12 and 13, before we hear this critical presentation from our CDRA office.
So would you sound item number 12, please?
Yes. Actually, Mayor and Council, item 12 will, will need to be two motions, according to the city attorney's office. This is a request for council approval to award an ITB 22-100 White Mill Road Full Depth Reclamation and execution of a contract to Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction located in Atlanta, Georgia. The low bid was $1,483,233.50. That's the first item that's before you.
And just as a point of clarity, okay.
The sec, the second motion is going to allocate 10% of the $1,483,233.50. uh, for contingency. Uh, the Attorney's Office indicated that those need to be separate votes.
All right, let's uh, let, let's take the, the first motion. But I, I do just wanna ask a, a point of clarification, and this may be for the, is the L-MIG grant the second motion?
First motion.
The L-MIG grant, so I, I wanna be clear, that isn't the one point, um, that we're not paying the one point seven million. Our thirty percent match is three hundred thousand, is that correct? They're, they're conferring, I'll wait for them.
Can we go to item thirteen?
Need Mr. Martina?
Yes. Um, yeah, can you confirm that we only have to pay the thirty percent for this L-MIG match?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. All right, uh, Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to get some clarification on this too, that um, is the City of Fable? Because I thought when this was presented initially some months ago, that there was some contribution from the City of Fable?
Yes, there is.
It's not displayed here. I, do you recall what their contribution is? And is it, is this the total cost that they will then pay a part of this? Or, I'm not sure what we approve in here.
You approve the full project and will be, lacking in a better term, reimbursed.
Okay.
From Fable, and I believe that number's around ten percent.
Okay.
It goes in and out, but mostly in, about ninety percent is in, within the city.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I recorded, it was about ten percent, okay. Um, any other questions? If not, Mr. Mayor, I wanna move that we approve um, the award of this ITB twenty-two one hundred for White, White Mill Road Full Depth Reclamation Contract.
So move.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That motion was approved.
All right, uh, you wanna take this, call the second item?
Yes, the second item is to allocate, uh, approve a ten percent contingency for this project. And I think that dollar amount of ten percent is... One hundred forty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-three uh, dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna um, move that we approve this ten percent contingency of one hundred forty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Discussion.
It's been, it's been properly moved and seconded, we have discussion, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. This ten percent contingency, are we sure that this is going to be enough money? Because I, I know projects, you start them, there's overruns, there's delays, things change. Will doing this ten percent give enough of a cushion? Or could we potentially have to come back if there's a change order and have to do more?
Uh, nothing's for certain when it comes to this. Uh, however, it is an industry standard to have a ten percent contingency along with these construction projects for uncertainties and unforeseen uh, issues. Uh, if it does go above that ten, it'll be back for council to present it.
Thank you.
And we, and we do have that ten percent coming back from Fable, they don't, they gonna put ten percent on it.
Ten percent of the project?
Uh, Dr. Rowe?
Um, just to verify, would it have to come back if it's within its twenty-five thousand? So we wouldn't have to delay the project? Have we found ourselves in that situation before?
I have not.
City Manager?
I would think that it would be within my spending authority, but since I've been here, I don't think we've found ourselves in that type of position.
I'm just thinking if it's only a little bit over...
The Attorney's Office may wanna...
Oh, y'all have done that, okay, thank you. Okay, that was, I just want that clarification.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Willis?
It is totally impossible for us to sit here and anticipate whether it's gonna cost money. I mean, I've had projects on three occasions where we've had to come back before this council and ask for a change order. There is a supply and demand issue as it relates to material. Um, I would suggest we just go ahead and approve this. And if material costs increase or something happens, then they just have to bring it back before council. It's just that simple as it was with Southwest Arts, I mean, with the Southwest Tennis Center, as it was with the lights. They're gonna have to bring back uh, recommendation for this council to approve for more cost for the lights. They gonna have to, and just like it was with the pool, there's a serious supply and demand issue. It's not our fault, blame it on the pandemic.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. I, I, I think I speak, I don't of, I, I don't often feel confident speaking for the whole council, but I think I can speak for the council and say, uh, we will not be the reason this project is delayed. So if at any time y'all need us to do a special call meeting to get this project done, I think, I think you can count on us to, we won't be the reason that, that this project is delayed.
I, I didn't ask the question to suggest that we were gonna hold it off. I just, I was hoping we'd be able to make sure that we give them what they need and that it's sufficient in the prayer that they don't have to come back.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, Councilman Reeves?
Well, I do have a different point of perspective of that because this was planned out in call scope while the pandemic was going on. So we do understand that um, contingencies, you are right, is, is normal in contracts. And I hope that they don't come back for a change order because it should have been built into the price that they do with the contingency. So um, that being said, is, I yield.
All right, uh, seeing no one else in the queue, I'm gonna call for the vote.
Yes, we have a motion by Councilmember Sebastian, second by Councilmember Gums to approve the ten percent contingency. Roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl. Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We're on item thirteen. Uh, this is a application by the City of South Fulton requesting a rezoning from A Medium Density Apartments zoning district to R three Single Family Dwelling Zoning District on twenty-three point four-four acres of land. Subject property is located along Cascade Road generally bounded by Cascade Road to the north, New Hope Road to the east, New Britton Drive to the south, and Trama Crow Park to the west. This is located in District One.
I move that we um, rezone um, from Medium Density Apartments to R three Single Family Dwellings. This is a downzoning on twenty-three point four-four acres of land.
So move.
It's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We are on Agenda Items Part Two. Uh, we're at Presentation, Conference of Plan and Future Land Use. And I believe Mr. Derek Hall, Director, is making this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, just... Just to note, uh, th, this month is uh, National Community Planning Month, so I'm, I'm proud to kick off this series of conversations with this overview. Uh, Mr. Hall, please go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council. Derek Hall reporting on behalf of the Community Development Department. Uh, and as the mayor indicated, this is National Community Planning Month. So happy National Community Planning Month. When you see a planner out in the community, give him a hug, give her a hug, give her a kiss, give him a kiss, whatever you wanna do. But uh, I will at the end of this presentation also announce an event that we're gonna be having on, on Friday. Uh, but as the mayor mentioned, um, and um, I was both excited and slightly disappointed when I found out uh, that the city had engaged in a comprehensive plan update. And the reason why I was not necessarily excited, I was a little bit disappointed, is when I spent a little bit of time looking through the document, I noticed that despite all the efforts that had occurred at the community level, engaging a number of community residents, business owners, obviously the elected officials, and city staff, um, we did, um, the efforts were the minimum that you can achieve. And as I go through this presentation, we will talk about what is required by law in the state of Georgia uh, and what our comprehensive plan includes versus what I want to discuss with you and that I hope in this next year we can undertake as a city to really um, roll out a more robust and a more distinct comprehensive plan for the city of, of South Fulton. So with that, I wanna start off with um, many of you have heard of Mazemo's Hierarchy of Names. I flipped the pyramid to turn it so where, and this is a good example of explaining the comprehensive plan and of other land use documents. So I called this the Hierarchy of Land Use Policy Documents. So the comprehensive plan is meant to be, if you will understand this, a fifty thousand view looking down, providing general parameters for a municipality. It could be a city, it could be a county, it could be a state. Um, and so while the plan is supposed to be general, it does provide specific policy recommendations that we are to implement as a city. Falling below the comprehensive plan, we have community plans in overlay districts. Uh, Councilmember Reeves, Councilwoman Willi, uh, Williams uh, have, are undertaking in their district and then also, and also in District Seven, they're undertaking currently the um, Old National LCI, which is a community plan that is going to provide recommendations on economic development, but also on some land use policies. So it falls below a comprehensive plan, but is the next level of land use documents that we use. In Councilwoman Willis's district and in Councilwoman, um, help me out, no, sorry. Uh, Rawl's district, we have the Cascade Overlay and we have the um...
Sandtown.
Sandtown, uh, but I'm, I was speaking specifically for District Three. We have the Red Oak Overlay District. And these two are area-wide districts that provide some guiding principles related to land use, but not necessarily specific to a particular parcel. That's where you get into the zoning ordinance. So our zoning ordinance, lower level than the comm plan and the community plans in overlay districts, but provides specific regulations related parcel by parcel within a particular area, typically in a neighborhood or within a certain designated area. But it provides the restrictions on how the individual can use his or her land, how a business can use his or her uh, land related to the specific regulations and the ordinance. And then there are other policy document, other land use policy documents that are either included in the zoning ordinance or are standalone. Tonight, we talked about, uh, with the previous road closure, we talked about a little bit of the subdivision regulations. That is a, a land use um, element to the zoning ordinance that actually talks about specific regulations, development standards for subdivisions when we are undertaking them in the community. And then finally, at the um, local level, the really local neighborhood level, HOA and CCNRs, conditions, covenants, and restrictions that are a part of when you build a, a new subdivision and you have a homeowners association, you have some specific regulations in terms of what homeowners can do with their properties. And then of course, the individual property owner. So I say all that to say, you understand kind of now how this pyramid works and the relationship of the comprehensive plan, which is what we're gonna focus on tonight. Uh, the comprehensive plan in Georgia is regulated ironically by the, uh, the Department of Community Affairs. Uh, and so this is in Chapter one-ten dash twelve dash one point oh-one um, of the uh, Community Affairs Department for the state. Uh, specifically reflects the important uh, interests related to health and economic vibrancy for cities and counties. Um, and it really is tied to the economic prosperity um, of a municipality. So you will see um, moving forward and, you know, um, it's, it's great to be in this role because I have to work with a lot of departments. But particularly when we're dealing with the co, with the comprehensive plan, I have to work a lot with the Economic Development Department to make sure that we are understanding the, the issues of, of vibrancy and viability of our city on a long-term basis. The local benefits include fact-based resource for local constituents that track implementation of community-based policies. So um, I've met with each of you and each of you have indicated to me, as well as the city manager and as well as other department heads, the importance of making sure that the community is a part of our process. And so part of what a comprehensive plan does through a series of meetings is allow for stakeholders to provide feedback on what those long-term policies and recommendations are gonna be. It creates an environment of predictability for businesses and industry, investors, property owners, taxpayers, and the general public. It helps to localize government to recognize and then implement important economic development, and we hear that again, and revitalization initiatives. Now, now this information is not for me, this is specifically from uh, the Department of Community Affairs. So you see, there is a unique um, nexus between um, a comprehensive plan and all of our land use and policy recommendations and ultimately economic development. Uh, some more general guidelines, uh, the department established uh, this authority uh, by creating standards and procedures for comprehensive planning for all local governments in Georgia. This is across the board. Those standards and procedures emphasize preparation of a plan to help each local government address its immediate needs and opportunities while moving toward realization of its long-term goals for the future. Now, most of you all know what this is. This is a SWOT analysis. And most um, uh, corporate structures and most government entities, you at some point undertake an activity of conducting a SWOT analysis. And so this is what this speaks specifically to. In order to maintain qualified local government certification and thereby remain eligible for state funding and permitting programs, each local government must prepare, adopt, maintain, and implement a comprehensive plan as specified in these standards. So because we are an independent city, we are a municipality of over a hundred thousand residents, and because we want to govern our affairs locally, we are required by law to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan in place. And that was what was undertaken in December twenty-twenty-one. Now let's talk about a little bit of what is required in a comprehensive plan. So uh, you are required to have community goals. Uh, all local governments are required to have that. You are required to undertake a SWOT analysis. So you assess your strength, strengths and your weaknesses, your opportunities and your threats. And you identify these and specifically focus on the needs and the opportunities for the community. You are required to have a community work program. And this basically outlines the issue that you've identified, the, the policy that you have identified, and uh, at the city level, the implementing department and, and if it requires stakeholder participation, that stakeholder group that's going to carry out that particular policy. Now, I'm happy to say that uh, our plan has those three elements, but that's where it stops. Now I'm gonna talk about some other elements that um, are interwoven in our plan, but they are not standalone specific elements that I think we should explore at a later date. So one of those uh, elements is the capital improvement element. And this is when uh, particularly municipalities have decided to charge development impact fees. You will see, um, and I've expressed this to the city manager, that we will be um, procuring a consultant to engage the city in its own... to engage the city in its own development impact fee study. And so that's going to be coming in the next couple of weeks. But we don't have a capital improvement element. So the issues that we were just talking about with the subdivision and the road closure, these will be things that will be identified. Identifying every public right-of-way, every private right-of-way in the city will be a part of this capital improvement element. Dealing with issues such as traffic, understanding the various transportation options will be explored in this particular element as well as the transportation element, which I'll get into a little bit further. The economic development element. Again, our plan discusses recommendations for economic development, but there isn't a standalone economic development element. And so what we do have is an economic development plan. And so I've been in conversations with the Economic Development Director and we have talked about taking the best recommendations out of that plan and incorporating it into the comprehensive plan. The land use element, which is a requirement if you have zoning and we have local zoning, we are required to have. What we have, we don't have a necessarily standalone land use element, but what we do have, obviously, is a future land use map, which is required. And then we do a corresponding zoning district reference so that applicants, so that the community can understand and know what land use designation corresponds to the appropriate zoning district.
Mr. Hole, I just want to just let you know, I know you've got about three more slides and we've got some questions, so we just want to
Okay. I will, I will go through as quickly as possible. Transportation element, as I mentioned, really deals with congestion in the community and talks about alternative modes of transportation such as adding bicycle lanes and public transit options. And then finally, the housing element, which really focuses not only on the current housing stock in the city, but is specific to, and I had come to you about two or three months ago to talk about our HUD programs, but looking at affordable housing, concentration of low quality and dilapidated housing, and then specifically a job and housing imbalance. So what I am going to be proposing over the next couple of weeks, and we'll be getting into a little bit more detail, is to make sure that we go back and revisit our comprehensive plan. I've met with many of you and many of you have told me that you want to make some changes to some of the land uses in your respective districts. So we're going to go through the process again. What we're, what we are advantaged in doing is that we don't have to start from scratch because we can take our existing plan and, as I say, embellish it a little bit, clean it up, make sure that we continue to have the stakeholder meetings and then move forward with recommendations. I am also going to recommend that we consider a health element that deals with the overall quality of health for the community and a parks and recreation element that really gets at the heart of looking at our open space areas in the city. Next slide. So again, our plan as it was performed, as it was completed in December 2021 just has these three elements. So this community vision and goals, this community work plan and this future land use map. So it's missing a lot of critical elements that would help us to deal with some of the issues that we've kind of, that we've discussed tonight. This next slide shows what is required, which is a future land use map. And I think it's, it's just, I need to take a moment to just express and explain. When we talk about future land use at the comprehensive plan level, that is different than zoning. So our future land use are general categories based upon areas or regions in an, in a municipality. The specific land, the specific zoning district is specific to a particular parcel. So one is more individual, one is more regional and, and widespread. So we will explore these as a part of our redo of our comprehensive plan. So before I conclude, what I want to leave with Mayor and Council tonight is, as we look to try and incorporate now some of the recommended, some of the items that you have identified as elected officials related to your specific districts are to re-engage the community about undertaking the activities of the comprehensive plan. So, you know, assess the best elements of our current plan, identify our key stakeholders, establish community meetings calendars, conduct the public participation, synthesize the community input and formulate policies in the community plan, prepare draft revisions, incorporate final changes and then publish for public review and council consideration. So I believe this is a hefty task that we have to take, but we have new planners on and we know that working with your legislative assistants and yourselves, we can get this done and update our comprehensive plan to reflect more of what the community wants and as the elected officials, more of what you want to see in your community. And so my very last slide talks about additional land use considerations. And when I use the term land use, I mean it in a general context. So as we're looking to now go through this process of updating our comprehensive plan, we need to look at things like updating the land use designations, for instance. In our current plan, when Atlanta Regional Commission was doing this initiative for us, we didn't have a category for parks and open space. So we used a general designation of agriculture. As you all know, agriculture and open space are not necessarily the same type of use, land use. So we have to clean that up. And we've identified where this has occurred throughout the comprehensive plan. And we're preparing to make those changes. The consistency between the comprehensive plan and zoning. So there are certain land use designations that are not consistent with certain zoning districts. And just making sure that there is a clear nexus between the two. Zoning district assignments. We have, believe it or not, even though we're five years old, we have parcels. Thanks to Councilwoman Willis for helping me to find these, we have parcels that don't have zoning designations that exist in our city. So we have to now go back and figure out what the appropriate zoning is for those. There are zoning text amendments that we have to do because some of the, some of the ordinance as it stands is either not legally consistent with state law or federal law or they are things that we can't enforce as a city. So we have to go back and fix that. There are some best practices that we need to introduce. We need to prohibit spot zoning. And that is when you have applicants to come into a community and they take a parcel and they want to change the zoning and nothing around it is similar to that zoning district. And so as planners, we, we discourage that type of activity because we consider that particular type of activity spot zoning. And then restrictive areas. There may be areas that where we need to protect because of the sheer nature of the area. If it's heavily wooded and we want to have a buffer between a heavily industrial use in a residential area so that it's not developed, we may need to strict the area for future development to protect and to create a natural buffer between. So in addition to doing a update to the comprehensive plan, we will look to take on these eight activities as a part of that process as well. So with that, I conclude my presentation. I would be remiss if I did not invite the city of South Fulton out to the, to this event we're going to have on Friday. It's called the State of Community Planning. And it's going to be at Southwest Art Center. And we will have, as one of our speakers, our main speaker is quite frankly, a very good, close friend of mine, a colleague, but has been one of the longest-serving planning and sustainability directors in all of metro Atlanta. And he is currently, his name is Andrew Baker. He is currently the DeKalb County Planning and Zoning Director. And he has been in his role since 2006. And so he's going to talk about equitable development and planning, particularly for communities of color. So if, if your schedules allow, please join us from six to nine and we also invite the community out for the event as well.
Just one more time, it is six to nine PM?
Yes.
And where is it?
Southwest Art Center.
Southwest Art Center. Thank you. I'm going to open it up to any questions. Dr. Rowe?
Just a quick question or, or a request. Just watching how some of our zoning cases have gone, I think it's very important that, I don't know if we have videos recorded or some kind of content, to explain to the public what the council can and cannot do because they think we can do more than we can. And so I was glad that you pointed out the future land use and the distinction between zoning and the future land use and what we can and can't say, can and cannot say no to legally. I find that to be a very big disconnect and a failure to, either us to communicate in the, to the public how strong a property rights state Georgia is. And so how do we navigate? Because I watch people come there thinking that the council is not in alignment when legally we don't have a basis to deny something. So how do we, why are we going through this over the next year? How do we educate the public so we don't have to go through this for a whole nother year of them not understanding what we can and can not do?
So part of what I've discussed with the city manager's office and what wasn't in community development was a strong community planning division. So we are reorganizing the division, the planning division, where half the staff will work on current planning activities, the other half of the staff will work on community planning activities. So the goal is to go out into community and have at least three meetings a week all over the city to talk about those different types of concepts and projects that we need to do. And part of it is just simple education. As you all know, as you've met with your constituency, a lot of them think that they may understand and know about planning, but they, they really maybe only know a little bit about a particular topic. I know it was overwhelming when I sent that email out with those 25 topics or more. And we have more that we can discuss. And so what we're planning to do is record those sessions, but then just have in-person meetings so that we can have focused, specific topics to educate the community. And what I want to do is, you know, we can talk about a myriad of things related to planning in particular, community development. But if we have specific focused topics, we talk about a particular topic, they can grasp the concept and then move on to the next. So this is everything from housing and everything that falls under that. Market rate housing, affordable housing, cottage homes, alternative, you know, housing types. Everything we can talk about. And then we can move into transit-oriented development. And what is that? I remember, and I was so moved by Council Williams' comments in a couple of previous council meetings where she was talking to the community about, you say you want this in terms of commercial and retail, you have to have the rooftops to get it. So we're trying to bridge that gap to really educate people on, you know, if you want this, traffic is not always bad because then it means that, you know, they're going, they're driving to get to somewhere. Let's make sure that the city of South Fulton is a place where they can drive to get to, where their commercial needs can be met, where their retail needs can be met. So that's why, you know, I continue to really work with arty and figure out how can we best approach economic development? Where is it appropriately to be located? And how can we continue to encourage more people to come into our city to, to build? Because, you know, we don't want the burden to be on the backs of homeowners. If we can share this across the commercial industry and the industrial industry, despite what people may think, you know, industrial buildings pay a lot in tax property. And that's a lot of revenue for us. So we can take the burden off of the average homeowner by making sure that we can diversify the economic strata of the city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe. Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I knew when this plan was being adopted late in '21, before I was elected. And quite frankly, after I got here and especially taken a closer look now as an elected official, now based on the fact that residents of District Four are saying, we want this or we don't want that, right? It is very difficult to make sure that things are protected or brought in with some of the current plan that we have. I am concerned as some of my residents are that as we're bringing things, especially into an area like District Four that's so rural, we are still open according to some of the zoning that we have in place, some of the overlays that we don't seem to have completed properly are not, are not there. So as you know, I've been talking to you a lot about reviewing some stuff for District Four. So I am pretty excited about going through this process. It's going to take us a year, but I don't want to be fighting developers to stop things. I want people to be encouraged to come here to do business. I, I, I don't want us at all to get the impression that we're difficult to work with or you never know what decision we're going to make with zoning. But when we have some of the things that have come forth recently for District Four, right? It's just, it's just problems. And quite frankly, I, I think we have, find, we find ourselves in this position, I think, based on the fact that we were going through this for the first time. And it's okay. You go through stuff, you learn. So we have a chance to fix it now. But I want us to fix it to the point where we can encourage developers to come here. So I am looking forward to working with you more and to learn exactly the things that I need to do and why I work with the citizens of District Four to strengthen the things that we want for District Four. Because we want stuff, but we just don't want stuff everywhere. Thank you. And by the way, that list that you sent, it was daunting, but I went through every single one, okay? I went through every single one. And of course, I sent you, I think, my top 10 or 12 or whatever it was. So thank you. I'm looking forward to actually going through those too. And just make sure we get them properly recorded so we can put them in our newsletter, we can have them on the website, we can refer citizens to them because a lot of times too, a lot of our citizens, they're busy just doing life. And quite frankly, some don't have the time to come to these meetings at these times during the day. So if you can send them a link and say, hey, look at this, you might learn something from it. That would be great. Thank you.
Councilman Reeves?
Thank you, Mr. Hole, for your presentation and I look forward to it and the high, the approach to overhauling our comprehensive plan. And follow my colleagues, the most important thing is the map, the zoning map as well, to fit into that. And so, and this is the time that the community can be involved because I plan on going back and reintroducing this to our community to work hand in hand again and so that we can get the things that we need. And I just want number 22, that cottage home to move on up the list to the top five there. So it's, because, you know, we do have housing demands and housing needs and, you know, people who want a new way to live. And so that I would love to move that on up to the top five. So, because I think that's a need. One of the things that is under attack is senior housing. As seniors are facing evictions, you know, right now and due to the market rate. So, but we have no options for them to go inside of the city. And also too, as you know, we have a need for Class A office space. I know our ED director will say Class B or Class C will win, you know, it's still a win. But yeah, Class A though, you know, with Class A comes a little bit different development as far as rooftops and what kind of developments we will bring that surround that area. And so I do have a few ideas that we can look at with the community. One of my members is here now, Mr. Johnson. And so that, and also to the opportunities of how they can be engaged too with, you know, when we talk about the construction and the design of these things and how they could be a part of the procurement process and, you know, help develop and, you know, collaborate with the city too. So thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Willis?
I'm just going to be real quick.
I'm just going to be real quick. The last comprehensive development plan did not, the last comprehensive development plan to me did not include enough community engagement. It felt rushed. Hence why it was voted down and we ended up jeopardizing our status with, in our ability to go after grants. We need just to make sure that we are not rushing through this process. And next time, being engaging as much as possible. We did have the pandemic last time that was preventing us to meet a lot in person. And so that hurt seniors, especially in one part of my community, who felt like they were just totally being treated in a dismissive way. And so I'm glad we're going through this process again. And let's get this going. Thank you, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. A question and a couple of quick comments. First, I want to go back to what Dr. Rowe was saying. I do think that that education is super important. But because we are a property rights state, and the majority of property rights will always go with the land owner, we've got to be about the business of owning more land. And so what I would ask Madam City Managers, I know we have this land acquisition specialist coming on. I think one of the things that we should direct her or him to do is to look at the places that are most likely to be exploited by developers. And if we need to buy that land first, or places where we can do catalytic site developments that change the trajectory of what we are being offered. Because too often, we just, when developers come to us, they are not bringing us things that we are excited about as a council or as a city. So I think that we just need to be strategic in purchasing as much property around the city as possible, whether we hold it to develop ourselves or whether we just hold it until we start getting better offers and then we can put it back on the market and, you know, make a profit off of it. One of the things that I do hear whenever we, often I think about Michelle Battle when she's presenting and people are pushing back against things in our zoning ordinance. She will often say, right, and other attorneys will often say, that we are only doing what is allowed by the ordinance, right? So, and I want to, and that brings me to these questions about the timeline. I think one of the reasons, one of the reasons that we also rushed into the adoption of the zoning ordinance the way that we did in 2021 is because we were hearing it at the same time that we were doing our budget. And so I'm looking at this, this calendar and I see that the draft revisions and the final changes are coming in September and October. That's kind of around budget season. I just, I just want to caution about that. And then my question is, this is for the update of the comprehensive plan, which is the first document in that reverse triangle. The zoning ordinance or the future land use map, that's not included in this?
So the future land use map is actually a part of the comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance is a standalone document that has a parcel by parcel zoning designation. Well, at least that's what we thought. But we now find out that we have parcels that don't have zoning on them. So we have to fix that as well. But that's a totally different map. And that is subject to change as people are requesting rezonings. Which is why we don't really have a zoning map, because it can be what it says today. But when we get requests next month, it can change because of what people are requesting if it's granted by council.
I hear that. But the, if we, if we make changes to the zoning ordinance or the overlay districts, it's your intention to do that after we go through this comp plan process?
The overlay districts and the community plan should be a part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so all of that will be the part?
The zoning ordinance is a separate document that course, that will correspond to the community plan. So we will have corresponding zoning districts based upon the overall land use designations. We have, and I'll give you a quick example. We would never have as a residential land use designation, we would never have a corresponding zoning district of industrial, right? Because those are incompatible zoning districts and land use designations. But we would have a compatible mixed use, land use designation and a commercial and/or a mixed use zoning district, because those are compatible.
So, so just to be clear, in 2023, we'll be looking at the comprehensive plan, the future land use map?
Which is a part of the comprehensive?
And the overlay districts. And then any rewrites of the zoning ordinance we would tackle in 2024 after we go through these things.
Now, what I am proposing, and a couple of council members have brought to my attention, some eras that exist right now in our zoning ordinance. So those are going to be things, as we're going, we have a text amendment, in fact, tonight. We had one. We had a zoning change that was city initiated tonight. As we looked at the area and we wanted to make sure that the zoning for any new proposed project would be consistent with what's around, which was a R3 zoning designation in District One. But this particular area had, for whatever reason, a apartment zoning district on it, which meant that a apartment, a large scale apartment development could be surrounded by single family homes, which would not be necessarily a consistent and a compatible use. And so we will, throughout the year, we will be doing text amendments to correct the zoning ordinance, to add clarity to some of the things in the zoning ordinance. But the comprehensive overhaul of the zoning ordinance will not occur until after the comp plan is done.
All right, thank you. Music to my ears. Thank you so much for that thorough presentation. We will have more of these in every upcoming work session. If it is all right with the council, I have a request to move the, to go next to item number 19. We have some people with the C V B who've been waiting to make that presentation. Is that okay with everyone? All right, after number 16, could we go ahead and go to number 19? Would that be all right with folks?
We approve numbers, item number 16, item number 17, item number 18, item number 19, and item number 20.
Second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about those one, two, three, four, five items?
Just a quick discussion for number 16, just very quick. The purpose for the moratorium is just to allow for me to work with the Economic Development Director in our community to best determine what they would like to see in that vacant spot. Thank you.
All right. I am uncomfortable with these, these bulk things, but it is, the hour is late, I understand. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote. If you would just call out each thing that we're voting on for the, for the record, for the people that are watching.
Okay. I have item 16, resolution, temporary moratorium on bars and clubs in the Red Oak Historic District, sponsored by Councilmember Willis. Item 17, second read and request council approval of an ordinance amending the city council district maps due to reapportionment as a result of the 2020 census. Have item 18, council approval of emergency ordinance declaring a state of emergency in the city of South Fulton, providing for city meetings to be held virtually, providing for an effective date and for other lawful purposes, sponsored by Councilmember Rowe. Item 19, request approval of recommended amendments to the city of South Fulton Convention and Visitors Bureau bylaws. Item 20, request council approval of 2023 legislative priorities.
All right. Please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
All right, thank you. Please sound the next item.
Actually, item 21 is request council approval of negotiated sublease for a Public Works Operations Center. It's my understanding, according to the city attorney and city manager, this item is not ready at this time.
Okay. Do we?
I move to table item number 21, council approval to negotiate a sublease for Public Works Operations.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Not ready.
It's not, he said it's not ready.
I have a discussion about the tabling. Do, do we have an estimated date of when it will be ready?
We're going to try to shoot for the 15th. The main issue is just screening off and turning between the proposed sublease.
All right, I'm just, I'm going to urge us to do that because we, we. We ended our contract with Jacobs on September 30th. Councilwoman Willis?
This is the third time we have postponed this. It was on the agenda, this is the third time. And it's getting quite ridiculous. So. It almost remind me of the police, the police lease proposals kept coming to us. We kept kicking the can down the road, and we don't need to get into another situation. So I know there was a space identified that may accommodate Public Works and some other, we need to discuss this under real estate and then move this ball forward. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further comments, we will, will you call the vote to table this item to the 15th?
Yes, roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
That item was table unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item 22, Georgia Power Pole Attachment Agreements. This is sponsored by the Economic Development Department slash Public Works.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Evening, it's almost morning. Long day. The Georgia Power Pole Attachment License Agreement. This is nothing more than the city's ability within the city limits to be able to attach items to the Georgia Power poles. This is no cost to the city of South Fulton so long as we apply each and every time that we want to attach something to the poles. It might be decorations for holidays, it might be banners, but this gives us the power to be able to attach items to the banners. That's all this is. If there was a particular, say, an example is the holidays. If we wanted to put banners along Old National Highway, we would have to sign an agreement, apply for it, identify the, I guess, the poles that we, where we wanted to have those attachments. And then we would submit it to Georgia Power and they would turn that around for us within two to three week period of time. So that's all this agreement is about, no cost to the city of South Fulton. Do you have any questions?
Seeing or hearing no questions, I will entertain a motion.
The Georgia Pole?
It's an agreement.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
That item is approved unanimously.
How soon can I get some Christmas lights on Old National?
All right, please sound the last item, Mr. Clerk.
Last item is the first read, an ordinance adopting the Georgia Uniform Rules of the Roll Code, section 46, 248.1B of chapter six of title 40 of the Official Code of Georgia annotated to regulate traffic upon the public streets of the city of South Fulton and repealing all other ordinances and sections of ordinances in conflict herewith. To amend title 15 Criminal Offenses, chapter two, offenses involving property rights, section 15, 2002 of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinances for the purpose of litter prevention and for other lawful purposes. This is sponsored by Councilmember Gums.
This is just the first read, it's gone through the legislative process. If any of my colleagues have any questions, please let me know.
All right. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda. I would happily entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
I would like to make a substitute motion to go into executive session for real estate personnel and litigation. We must discuss loss. We just talked about a real estate matter that we need to discuss. And we have a personnel matter that we found out about today that we have to discuss. Trust me, I want to go home, but we have to do the business of the people. Thank you. That was a substitute motion for executive session.
Okay, there's a, there's a substitute motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. My, my, my discussion would, would, would only be, would only ask, I'm going to go back here, that we could end by 11:45. I would like to not start Wednesday here at Welcome Mall Park. Please call the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Councilmember Williams? That motion was approved at five to one, and we are recessed at 10:46 P M.